All right, call any city council meeting to order. August 27, 2019 at 6:02. Please stand for a flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united states, with a purpose to the free and justice of all.
What about local, please?
Councilmember Gruber.
Present.
Councilwoman Weiss.
Here.
Councilwoman Jonas Cabeat. Councilwoman Cook. Councilwoman Hatfield.
Here.
Councilwoman Missel.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Present.
Mayor House.
Here.
Make a motion to excuse tonight's absentee.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There is one update. Sarah is making copies of tonight's package for the public, so she'll get those around as well. Is there any other agenda updates?
Uh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Never mind. City Chief Plan's on there already. Sorry.
He's first. After the consent agenda, checks 16360 and 16372 and EFTs as follows. Accounts payable in the amount of $21,301.21. ACH account payable in the amount of $13,936.44. Payroll as of August 2019 in the $23,896. And our minutes for August 20th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
We're co-signing. Consent agenda passes. So first up is Chief Plan.
Thank you, Council. Mayor. Uh, so just to your oversight, I'll be quick. Looks like you've got a full crowd tonight, so. The first Tuesday every August, we hold National Night Out, and that is where the police departments get together, hold basically an open forum barbecue for the public. That this year was held at White Park because the park near Pine Street was under construction, but all that. So I think we actually got more people coming through White Park, and I think a lot of people driving by that forgot about it, remembered when they saw us. So chances are, we're going to be holding it again at White Park. In addition to us, we had the Sheriff's Office, the Forest Service, Roslyn Fire Department, Clayell Fire Department, Hops, Little District 2. They all showed up, so, and everybody brought vehicles, went out for the kids to play with. I cooked like eighty burgers, probably fifty hot dogs. We had a pretty good turnout. And my dad, it was hottest day of the year, so. The next fundraiser that we did was for the Special Olympics. The city of Pellensburg usually holds what they call cops on cop. And what that is, is a fundraiser for Special Olympics, and they have an officer up on the roof of Fred Meyer, and they drop down goody bags, whatnot, fishing poles for kids, if they believe in it, it's a cool thing. So we participated in that as well this year because they opened it up to all along, of course, many DCs and the county, making a bigger event, raise, to raise more money, more exposure, so we were able to sort of help out with that, and that was a really fun event. A little town south Clayell's been on our radar. We've had three felony cases working from them recently, so they've been somewhat time-consuming for us. Roslyn, on the other hand, has been pretty good. We did have a search and rescue on an endangered person earlier this last week. SAR came out and assisted. Thank you very much, search and rescue. And it came to a very peaceful result. Everybody got home safe, and so we're glad to see that. Obviously, we've got the log show and the parade coming up. We'll be out directing traffic and participating what we can on that. Like to see the log show's already set up in the parks, so we're getting a jump on it. So we'll be leaving the bathrooms, etc., before we leave. And then finally internally, a lot of new changes coming. Most, internally, guys won't see much, but we're going to up our training program substantially. So we're going to have more instructors in-house. We have an officer already scheduled for a ET instructor. We're adding another FTO, and then they have to get all the officers trained to take over my old positions for FTO firearms, evidence, personal supervision, all of them, all on hats. So we're in process for that. And we do have a job opening, so if anybody's, knows of anybody, please, please send them our link. It would be interesting. We hope to fill that soon, and that job position, we hope, may fill too.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Big secret. We didn't plan anything, right? We did have an agenda update, but we're not going to have a presentation from the board or should. So then we're going to move on to citizens comments. Because we've got a large crowd tonight, I'm going to limit the comments to three minutes for all public hearings as well. And I'd like it if you'd come forward so we can get it recorded, so that we don't have to rely on minutes. So citizens' comments on non-agenda items, please come in.
Make a brief, three minutes or less.
Thank you.
I'm Sandra McLean, and I'm on the front of the Roslyn Library Board. Some of you have seen me before. And I'm here just to talk a little bit about this fundraiser we're going to now. We're raising money to keep the library, to pay for the rent in the library while the construction's being done. So some of you may have seen the add-on paper. We have some articles and some other things going on about that, but I hope everyone admitted. We hope to get everyone here to attend. Heritage is working with us and sponsoring this. And we'll be explaining to people how the library's funded, what we need, where we're going, and we're excited about it. We're really excited about the upstairs. And that will be, how late goes there if someone else wants to.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
You guys are looking for Raffel Anderson?
Well...
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to say yes. I'm going to say yes.
What a conversation.
Why don't you put my name on there, stand up and play.
I did a real quick idea of a citizen comment that they asked that I read into public record. To whom I am concerned, I'd like to resign my position as Commissioner on the Roslyn Planning and Historic Committee effective immediately due to recent activities of the commission, as well as my own personal. I will no longer be participating in our project. Thank you for the opportunity to serve our community. I can only hope that the city will find others that can put aside their own agenda for power and control until further notice. I am aware of the needs of the city and plan to still be an active participant in the growth of our city. Sincerely, Karen Feeney. Other citizen comments on non-agenda.
Yes, I'm Doug Gilmore, 145 North Fifth Street. At last night's budget workshop, the conversation turned to the questions of our easements on the Roslyn water pipeline, and whether we had them or not. It seemed from the conversation it came back that we didn't have them. And I checked with Mike Woodwell later, and he confirmed that we don't have copies of original easements. So a month or two ago, I was going through some of our papers, preparing boxes of documents to go to the University of Washington Archives, and I came upon these, these legal documents from between 1910 and 1932, which, to my knowledge, as far as I can tell, these are the original easements. They were, Ellie Baloo located them about twenty years ago when she was on council, and when we were putting together our new water system. And they were located in the Minnesota Historical Society Northwest Improvement Corporation Archives. So interestingly enough, it looks like the easements protect our ability to put the line in, to repair it, and to renew it. It also gives us right to erode all along the easement, along the water line, provided that that would be a public road, which I think would now go through a gated community. And there are a few omissions, but you should be able to find the reported documents. Also includes access to Bureau of Reclamation Lands where our original water bridge, where our water line came in at a different location. So Mayor House, I've sent these to you. I've sent electronic copies to Mike, and I hope that they assist in their efforts to get their right to do the work that we need to do and to do that without our worries. Now, I was also interested to read relative to an issue that came up about four years ago, that if somebody, that the people who own the land that we have the easement on have the right to run vehicles over our water line. And if that water line is damaged anyway, it's not their responsibility, so, which is the way it turned out, you know, because we assumed all responsibility for the damage that others do to our water line.
Excellent. Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Okay, then let's open up the first public hearing tonight. Or please come forward so we can get this on record. It's the Architectural Design Review Code update. I'll open this public hearing. It'll take three minutes. And that's just the public talks, and then they read this and that.
There is a comment in the packet that needs to be read aloud.
Yeah, I got it right here. Hi, Michelle. I greatly appreciate if this letter could be read at the meantime. Proposed Architectural Design Review Code, Residential Code revisions. In 2015, I was obsessed with the new construction at 101 West Nevada. I wrote letters to the mayor, city council, planning commission, as well as code violation complaints to the city planner, but ultimately, the architect was able to take advantage of the loopholes in the existing building codes. If you doubt the need for residential code change, please go to this house and examine the height of the house. That's a four-story building, and the setbacks on the street in relation to its neighbors. This house is compelling, built, compellingly built evidence of the danger of damage posed by the existing codes with regard to Roslyn's historic character and integrity. I would like to thank the commissioners for their working diligently on these codes and asset their operate. Jenny Aueritz, homeowner.
I'm Kathy Cook, Oral Town, East Idaho. And I'd like to speak in support of the proposed changes to the Architectural Design Review regulations. There's a lot of building going on right now in Roslyn, and I think we can expect to see more. In fact, the comprehensive plan that the council just passed says that we can expect to see 216 more houses built in the next 20 years. Our total housing stock right now is 538 units. An additional 216 more houses means that between 1 and 3, and 1 and 4 houses will be new houses. I think that we can say this is an accurate projection. The council passed the comprehensive plan, so I assume you believe it's correct. So what will Roslyn be like with that much growth? First, let's talk about what we've got right now. I'll read from our existing standards and guidelines. And the standards and guidelines are pretty much taken directly from the original application for the national historic. So the standards and guidelines say, overall, the housing stock found in Roslyn is simple, functional, and vernacular in nature. It goes on to cite some of the qualities that give Roslyn a unique sense of place. The rhythm of repeated house types and roof lines, sturdy framed dwellings, similar in shape, scale, and roof type. And there's more. Roslyn's residential neighborhoods convey a sense of regularity and cohesiveness to the town as a whole. The texture of Roslyn is varied, but subtly so, and it is entirely without architectural postulation. So now think about some of the new houses that are being built around Roslyn. Do they contribute to a sense of regularity and cohesiveness? Are they part of a rhythm of repeated house types and roof line? Are they similar in scale to their neighbors? I bet you've seen some new ones that don't do any of those things. Those houses are being built under the existing design code, and that's why we need to make changes. I am completely aware that some of the existing historic houses are larger and taller than would be allowed under the proposed changes, or even under the existing code for that matter. But those houses are not the norm in town. Most houses are much smaller. The predominant housing type in the neighborhoods is smaller. And if we want to maintain the regularity and cohesiveness of our neighborhoods, then we need to take action to protect it. The really big houses allowed under the current design code are completely out of scale with their neighbors. The modest changes being proposed here will go a ways towards solving that. I know that we need houses that families can live in, but I wonder how many of us can afford to buy the houses currently being built. I couldn't, and probably struggling young families couldn't either. I don't think supporting the code changes will mean we're denying housing for families. In fact, we may help to afford building problems. In conclusion, I'd like to ask the council to pass the code changes. Our historic integrity is invaluable, and if we continue the way we're going, it will be lost. Thank you.
Next.
Got a visual aid, just so the council's aware, you might want to pass this around. I'll refer to that in my comments here. Janine Rodine, 301 North East Street, 15-year resident of Roslyn, house at Hall, family home for 40 years. Council, public staff. In 1978, Roslyn was placed on the Historic, National Register of Historic Places. That period of designation was 1990 to 1930. In 2010, the town was placed on the state's most endangered historic properties due to increased development. I believe that Roslyn's historic integrity is still in danger. For 10 years, I helped manage city grants for intensive agricultural, sorry, architectural surveys of the structures in town. We learned that 54% of Roslyn properties contribute to historic property. This included both original and new structures. So the key elements of contributing structure are the front porch, windows, the roof, materials, height, and width. There's one remaining survey to do, and that's the South Edition, basically the town area. We have a grant to do that survey. Once that's completed, the Department of Archaeology and Historical Preservation selects Roslyn to reapply for its historic designation. It is not an imperatorium thing. Like many others, I would like to keep the town historic and keep that designation. It's been said that in this room, that history is being made today. Some change is inevitable, but the changes that support historic preservation are specific. The Secretary of the Department of Interior says, quote, "Changes which may have taken place in the course of time are evidence of the history and development of a building, structure, site, or environment. These changes may have acquired significance in their own right, and this significance shall be recognized and respected." An example of the slide files, a few years ago, someone wanted to remove the trees from the slide files, but historically, those trees are part of history. But buildings are different. Without guidance from clear architectural codes which favor smaller buildings, discrete square footage, and appropriate windows, Roslyn will lose our historic integrity and even possibly our historic designation. I have three requests about the codes that you're going to be looking at tonight. A change to 1,300 square feet, which would include the front porch, would actually allow for a bigger square footprint. Square porches can be up to 300 square feet, so the footprint would actually be 1,450. It doesn't look like that at first, but if you look at it closely, it's that. A decrease from a maximum height of 35 to 30. What's the guideline saying, Kathy referred to, quote, "Houses are usually one, one and a half, or two stories in height." 35 feet is way higher than that. A third change I hope council will consider, it's not in the codes, I hope that they will ask for some research on this, is to consider changing the five-foot side setbacks to 10 feet. I did a little survey on the blue map that's behind you guys, you can't see it right now. It was a rough survey, but at least forty, at least 80% of our lotlines are at 50 feet. If we allowed, if we required a 10-foot setback, that would make the front of a house more unsafe with what we currently have, which is 21 to 25 feet. I am not speaking about what constitutes good design. I'm talking about specific elements of building design that can be identified, identified or addressed in the review process. As you vote today, I hope you share my personal desire to maintain a residential town with rich historic qualities. Think about the city online survey which occurred during the conference and planning period, where 90% of respondents wanted the history of the town to be revealed. Thank you for your time. I think I heard the buzzer. I have copies of this for you. Copy. Council people, if anyone talks fast.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Not that I'm nervous, man. Uh-oh, uh-oh, uh-oh. Thank you. Janine's in here, and I like them good, too. Thank you.
Next, for the Architectural Design Review Code update, Melody.
Hi, mine is very small compared to those lovely, lovely speeches. Thank you, ladies, though. That's amazing. First, these are just some...
address. Sorry. Address.
Oh, Andrea Suite 105 North A Street, Roslyn. I've just got some script, I think it's called script errors, that we need, before we approve everything, we need to make sure that we've got the wording correct. So one of the things, and Michelle will spot this right off the bat, is there's a section in our roofing code that allows for houses, say, if you built a house in the 70s before we had our codes, and your roof pitch is only 512. Well, we have verbiage written in there that would allow you to add an addition onto your house that would match that existing roof line, so that you didn't have to put an odd roof line with your existing home. But somehow, in the moving paragraphs around and stuff, we don't have it, we don't have the verbiage in there that says that you can have an extension of the predominant roof pitch. This is just sounding like if you put a dormer or a porch on, you can have the predominant roof pitch. But it's more than that, if you want to put a room on. So we need to, I'm not sure how we worded that before.
Well, I can go over when we get to that, but it is, I'll read it when we, when they have their discussion. But it's in here. I think you might, yeah.
Okay, so it's number three under roof slope. And then the other one, we have covered entryways that are small porches, that are just little stoop kind of things, if they're covered. We have it written in there, four by four, and it should be 16 square feet, because somebody might, you know, need a little bit, you know, it's basically just a small stoop with a roof. And it says four by four, we had changed that to 16 square feet, and that's what we need it to be. And that's all. That's all that we've got.
Thank you. My name is Susan Johnson. Well, and thank you all for your service. I live at 317 South Third Street Alley. Don't think I could say it any better than Kathy Cook and Janine Rodine. I've been alarmed as I watch some of the new construction going up in town, and, well, the size, but also the height, and I was really hoping that there would be a change to bring our town to a more cohesive look, because, you know, I've been here, when I came here in the 70s, I was just so struck by all that criteria that the Historic Register had for us, and it's, we are a unique town, and we don't want to lose that. You know, I've got children who are living in some neighborhoods in Seattle, in these sweet little places with these little houses, and they're tearing them down and building these huge, you know, modern architecture, huge homes there. And I know we're not headed to that direction, but to see the change that really is contradictory to the cohesiveness of our town is alarming, and I really, you know, urge the council to make those changes that the commission's recommending. Thank you.
Anyone else on the reception here? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. One more.
Wait, one more. So, Michelle. Hi. Bill Dorfeld, 100 West Oregon, 204 West Montana, 206 West Montana. I agree with a lot of what I heard, I disagree with some things. There's been a lot of designers and builders and property owners who have really been struggling with getting the code in a very clear, concise manner. The planning commission has made a lot of great inroads to improving that. There's a lot of general comments here. I have a lot of specific feedback, which three minutes does not afford. That feedback, I did wake up at 3:30 this morning, ahead of work hours, to try and spend six hours to put together lots of detail to help in providing facts on the topic rather than just an emotional response. Emotions are very, very important, but sometimes it can cloud the actual facts of the matter. I think one of the most compelling things is when I performed a little audit study of a number of very nice historical buildings in town, and just look at what the total building footprint is, it's not only been a conform of current code standards, but it's in no way conforming with the proposed reduction of 1,300 square feet. The move to make things smaller, the population is growing. If we have smaller lots, that means we need to take up more property rather than actually building larger, if you will, homes on existing plots. We have population moving into the city, we need to really think about that, how to do it intelligently, and not just say, no, everything needs to be smaller. Especially as, I have to say, double standard when people making these calls live in very large homes. To help visualize some of the challenges regarding building height reduction proposals, I put together this graphic, which I encourage everyone to look at, just to get a sense of, if we're talking about, we're sick of 30 feet, that means we can only go 26 wide on a structure, okay? When you do the math of a typical nine-foot lower floor and eight-foot upper floor, the 10-foot lower floor was really historically common in Victorian days, look at the carpenter hops in Clayell. So we need to really be, you know, careful about making rash decisions. If it means hiring an independent consultant to take the motion out of it, really do a very, you know, careful study, that may be well worth it. Not in any way to discredit the wide body of knowledge of people that are here, there's lots of wonderful people here.
Bill, what was your?
Yes, sir.
Council, just so you know, Bill's documents are in your council packets with the sticky note that says comment on them.
In this document, a Roslyn Historical Building Footprint Study, and working in the early morning hours, looked at county records to find out just what the building footprint was of the number of houses, the Huckleberry House, which is truly historic. Total building footprint, 1679 square feet. 311 North B Street, 1387, that's the only one in this group that is below 1,400. All the others are well in excess of 1,400, including recent additions and remodels of existing structures such as this and others. These are the facts, these are the numbers, and I think those are beautiful homes. And so me as a property owner and working with clients and me myself want to build here, I'm thinking, well, if I want to build a house like this, I can't under these code revisions, and I don't think that's fair. And I think that this is historic look, and we should be able to build like this. So I guess my three minutes are up. I do have a lot more specific feedback on specific, not just general, specific code changes. I've been making these same pounds for really quite a long time, and it's shared by other people in the community, and I encourage, or I hope that they'll receive some attention. If I had the opportunity to go through one by one, I would, but it looks like a lot of time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't read it today. I saw it online, so thank you.
Tom, you're in. 103 North East Street, Roslyn. So I considered whether I would testify tonight, mainly because who can disagree with the idea of preserving the character of Roslyn, right? And if the minds of everybody develop these standards to help us preserve that character, then, you know, that's the way it should be. But I do have a concern, as I've watched, you know, these standards being developed, and that is that casual survey of roadside and some of the sloped areas show that under these new standards, a significant portion of the existing housing stock would be nonconforming. And so I don't know exactly what that means in terms of permitting, or if there was a fire or something, and a house had to be rebuilt. But it raised another question to my mind, which I, with all due respect, you have to think about passing codes that will make a huge amount of your housing stock nonconforming, right? So is that really the code change? Is that really the issue that you're trying to solve, or not? Because all that exists in stock is what makes the character of Roslyn. So what I struggled with testifying is, if the decision is that this is what will be necessary to preserve the character, I'm for it. But I'm just scratching my head as to whether, you know, maybe it's not premature, what are the legal requirements. to whether, you know, maybe it's not premature, what are the legal ramifications, if somebody were to contest the new standards and point out, you know, a huge amount? So, that's my thought. I just, it just is difficult for me to think that you're going to essentially outlaw a significant amount of the existing stock. On the sloped areas, in the downtown, I think the new standards make, you know, way more sense than they do on sloped areas, because in the sloped areas, this, together with the change that the council made several months ago, which eliminated the average lot height, huge amounts of those would not be able to be built today. So, I'm not testifying for a certain position, but I'm just wondering if these things have been thought about, and what the ramifications are, and has anybody carried a house through with the change that the council made like three months ago, and see if that maybe helps the problem? And, you know, additional stamps aren't necessary, so that's my testimony. And I wrote an email to Jeff, and I copied Michelle and all, and then I'll, it's essentially what I just testified to. So, thank you.
Mark Braden, 301 North E Street, I just want to take out, make a point of personal privilege, as one of the houses referred to, which is a large house, would not be permitted under the current or proposed guidelines. I want to point out that when my parents bought the house in the late 70s, there were no such codes in town. They fixed that house up in 1980 to 82, when their longtime friends moved into them, and they turned it into a duplex, they made it into a much larger house, one which would not be permitted under current codes, but which was perfectly suited at the time. To the gentleman's point, I don't think anybody is suggesting that anybody go back and change their houses. There are ranch houses, there are brick houses, there's all kinds of houses, but when you have probably over half the houses contributing to the historic character, and you're going to add a whole other third as many houses, that's going to change that balance, and it threatens the historic feel of the town. I just want to point out, not trying, at the time when my wife and I inherited the house, we made plans, we came before the planning commission, they asked us to make, I think it was 17 changes, and we made every single one of them, including some which required going back to the architect and redoing it, and taking another month, and complied with both the county and the city requirements at the time. The point is not trying to go back and legislate the past, it's trying to, how do we maintain our community in a way that doesn't turn us into this again? Thank you.
My name's Chris Martin, 205 East Idaho, and I've restored seven historic homes and one commercial building in town. I believe that most people, including the planning commission, would agree that they've been done with a high degree of historical integrity. And I really, you know, I appreciate the effort to do that. My concern is that, you know, if you guys are going to adopt a code tonight, and members of the commission are coming to tell you there's typos and things that aren't right in there, I don't believe it's been vetted properly. And I could go through and point out some issues, too, some that I believe a developer could drive a truck through, and you really won't like the result, and others that just need to be cleaned up. And I just really think it's important that everybody agrees, you know, I think everybody agrees on what we want. There's not a disagreement there. I think the challenge is, and I've said this again, and I don't mean any offense, but the planning commission doesn't have an architect or an engineer on it. And it makes it very difficult when you're reading code to see how that translates into plans, unless you have that skill set and that level of expertise. And I don't know if it means like, and I hate to say the word like, I mean, I agree there's a lot going on, but getting it right's just so important. You know, if it's right, no one here is going to come and argue, because everyone who's spoken has said that they want that historic character, and they want that small scale, et cetera. But this, the code as it's written, I mean, I could come and design you a house that would look, you'd hate it. I briefly sketched it out with an architect this afternoon, and I chose not to bring it. But it's kind of actually not fun. And so, I just think getting it right requires a level of professionalism that a group of, you know, very well-meaning citizens doesn't have. So, I would encourage us to send the code out and ask for comments from, you know, from architects, so we get, we really get it right the first time. Because it'd be a shame to see this, this cycle continue, where something gets built, and then we react to it, and then something else happens, and then we react to it, especially when we all know that we don't. So, thank you.
James Gantbury, 302 South Third Street, lived here about 25 years, and I have to agree with a lot of the last two gentlemen said before me, I don't think this is well thought out, I think it's arbitrary, and lacks much of what you need to have a cohesive idea of how things should work, and not get problems, for example. You make a 1,400 square foot footprint, or a 1,300 in arbitrary way, and then designers make their gable and even overhangs or shorter, let's say six inches, or five inches, or none, and is that a desirable trait you want in a house? No. Just be aware of what you ask for, you might just get it. And I think you need more skill and approach of people to look at this before you have an idea of a number in your head of like 1,300, 1,400, because I think it's arbitrary and not well thought out. And I don't have any personal vested interest, other than my own property rights. Understand? And I built my own house here 20 years ago, and made improvements, changes, and nothing's always perfect, but, you know, I like, value the opportunity to do that. And I think that's really important, that you value personal property rights of people who live here and want to live here, not as an investment first, as in, it's not a, yeah, a plan. It's because I live here and I'm proving it. So, you know, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, then I will close the Architectural Design Review Code Update Public Hearing, and then we will open up the Franchise Business Reportings Public Hearing. Okay, then I will close the Franchise Business Public Hearing.
Thank you.
And we will open the Building Code 1505 Updates Public Hearing. Any comments on this one? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing for Building Code 1505 Update, and now we go on to final reading, and we'll start with the Architectural Design Review Code Update, with Michelle coming up on Dorfeld.
So, the draft, I've got the redline graphs here, what you guys have in front of you is basically the clean copy with Anne Marie's final comments, and then just a lot of the little, with all the changes, and the formatting, what was messed up, so that's all stuff that co-publishing goes through as well, but I did correct some of it in that draft. And then, Planning Commission also, I think they touched on most of them here, but they had talked about potentially the 10-foot setback for lots wider. And then, Anne Marie had a couple things that Planning Commission didn't address during their last proposed revision. One of those is on page, well, the first one is on page four of nine. If you go down to the bottom of the page, under C, and then I under that, it says, "Buildings are, buildings may be proposed subject to city approval to step back more than the minimum to accommodate site design and necessary considerations." So, this is in the commercial zone, but this is talking about this. And Anne Marie wants clarification as to what that city approval process is, what are the criteria for that being approved. So, for example, in the residential zone, there is a, there's verbiage in there that talks about the average setback of all of the other structures on the street. So, some, that's what she's talking about, or something similar to that.
So, like, when they talk about the average on a block line, if you want to add a porch in your houses up closer, we have nothing in the commercial part of that?
Yeah, so this is in our existing code at present. So, her recommendation is that if you're going, either strike it altogether, or define what that approval process would be, or what criteria that would be approved in the courts. That would be the first one she has, and then the second one that she had comment on, which we talked about the last meeting, was a 75% lot coverage in the commercial zone. You've got her notes there, I won't read them out loud, you guys, I'm sure you probably already read them. But obviously, she has, well, I will. "Concerns are related to whether or not such requirements are a reasonable exercise of the city's police power. To what extent does a minimum lot coverage requirement relate to the goals of the health, safety, and welfare of the community? Does this regulation exclude less wealthy people from developing land? Does such a regulation result in economic exclusiveness, economic segregation? Courts have found such regulations to be invalid in other jurisdictions. Courts have also found that aesthetic concerns, such as what are pointed out above, without other factors related to protecting the public health, safety, and welfare, are not enough to support such a regulation." So, she definitely wants those two items addressed, and then, the other, you guys can read through those, but the other ones were just typos. On page seven of nine, under the alternative energy sources for solar panels, the planning commission had proposed, so under C, it says, "For new residents, construction panels shall be monocrystalline panels with black frame cells and backing." So, that's an addition from the last language that you guys approved. You guys have previously approved this standard, but that would be a change from that language. And then, I've got notes on here for, Andrew brought up during the public hearing, the four by four, to change that to 16 square feet. And beyond that, oh, yeah, there's one more. So, on page, sorry. Page four of nine, at the top, under 18.50.070, that paragraph that reads, "All proposed improvements shall be compatible with the existing and planned characteristics surrounding area. All elements of the building design shall form an integrated statement harmonious in scale, line, and mass, and considering in any application for approval, the city shall be guided by the following criteria." The attorney suggested taking that language completely out, which said it's unenforceable. The planning commission feels that's important language to have in there under our historic designation, so the proposal's going forward with that language remaining.
Attorney's recommendation is to take it off?
Correct. Obviously, the discussion that we brought up is for 30 feet, so the proposal, the recommendation is put forth from the planning commission, 30 feet in height and 1,300 square foot.
So, I think our last meeting, we had a majority consensus that we all agreed to a 32-foot from 35 to 32, and I believe our consensus was we wanted to leave it at 1,400 square feet. I believe that's what we all came to, I mean, I think that was the majority consensus on the council last meeting.
Do you guys agree with that?
I'd agree with that, yeah.
I could accept 32, I'd like to, I think keep it at 1,400.
I just have a question on point of order, are we supposed to make a motion before discussion?
Then you have the torches, so it's 600, that's why it needs to be vetted.
Is it, actually? Yay!
I'll make a mo-
No, you're making a motion?
We're not allowed to speak. I'll make a motion to discuss the Architectural Design Review Code Update.
Just a motion for discussion. So, if you have any questions, direct them to staff.
I don't think it's a question, I think that's what we came up with our last meeting. I don't know if we need to have more discussion on it, I think we went back and forth on this several times. In my opinion, if you want to discuss it, I'm open to discussion, but I'd like to just leave it where we left it, on those two items.
Height cleaned up.
Is square footage, yeah. Do you have concerns that the attorney would like?
I would be inclined to remove if the attorney's asked us to remove.
Declined?
I would be inclined to.
Inclined, okay, yes, I was going to say, I agree with that, we followed the attorney's recommendation.
So, we would be removing the possible improvements shall be-
Yes, 18.5, 18.50.070.
It's not that we don't like that idea, it's just lawyer's recommendation.
I'm not allowed to speak, so I prefer people not speak to me, unless I can respond.
Can I ask a question, this process question?
No, you're already here.
It's a process question, not later to the thing. But you had a public hearing on a document.
Correct.
But now you're changing the document, so don't you have to have a public hearing again before you vote on it?
So, the proposal, the public hearing was on the proposal from the planning commission, so now council can amend it as they see fit before adoption.
And they can pass an ordinance without a public hearing on the ordinance? I don't understand that.
Well, they had, they had their public hearing, so they're not, they can't, they couldn't, I mean, they're inclined to either take the planning commission's recommendation to update, or, they've had previous workshops, so there's been like seven.
I know, but you're supposed to have a public hearing on the final thing.
And that's, we are having a public hearing on the final thing. All of these things that they're discussing have previously been discussed.
You're making a bigger hole.
I'm just telling you, there's a glitch in it.
At this point, the thing I see is, the 1,400 is what was on there originally?
1,400 is in the code right now.
It's already in the code right now, and the 35 feet was higher than what the 32 we had, but I think it is worthy of taking and maybe having a neutral party from the engineer or architect. I mean, I'm up for that suggestion, if everybody would support that, to take a look at it, if that's what we wanted to do on the final, but if not, I understand, I mean, you know more legals are best than I do.
I would, I would definitely agree we get another opinion before we actually vote on something here tonight. Just by the sheer number of people that are here right now, and the sheer comments I heard tonight, this is extremely important for a number of reasons. The history part of the town, what made it all special for why we're all here and still here. I think we're looking at some major changes to code, and to get a professional opinion from engineering and architects would be a good thing, that we could have a chance to review in a lot of detail, with maybe one more public hearing, so they can see what we've, what the professional group has told us, in addition to what our commission has told us that recommendations are, and give us a better understanding of how to make this decision, and make things right for Roslin. I think that's the most important thing. I don't want to rush to judgment today. I am not positioned to vote on this one way or another today, I think there's too much at stake here today, and I think we need some more experience to look at it. I'm not a builder, I financed buildings for a lot of my career, commercial and single family. I'm not an expert. I wouldn't say the council's an expert, they're an expert on what Roslin means, and what the historical thing, aspect of the town means, but I think we need to get a couple professionals to look at this, and maybe we can find some, and I know we're in a budget issue, maybe we can find some that we've worked with here in town, who understand Roslin a little bit, and can give us a better summary of where we're at with this proposed documents, and see what they say, and then have some time to look it over, have maybe one more public hearing, and at the conclusion of that public hearing, I think we'd have enough knowledge to make a rational and appropriate decision for ourselves and everybody included that lives here, and has a stake here, and those are future residents here. I would be in support of that.
I think it'd be nice to have an architect firm look at, I mean, I know, there's no doubt that architects can find loopholes in design they're really good at. I think it's worthy of taking that comment and sending it out to, I know an architect that has done more, a ton of historic, I know Chris Martin's very familiar with the architect I'm talking about, I've worked with one of them, one of his family members, I'd be happy to send it to him, I could probably get it for nothing to have him review it for me. But I do think it's worthy of looking for loopholes by an independent source. I think we all get focused on certain items, and you don't see maybe some of those, if somebody looks at it independently, I think sees loopholes that might stick out to us, and I think that would be worthy of taking time to do that. I mean, that's just my opinion, but I'm willing to take that time to have an independent source that has a historic background, I think that's the critical thing also. But I'm willing to not make a final decision if that's what council chooses to do.
Yeah, I have no reason to rush this, I'm not-
Yeah, I'm in no rea-, I have no reason to rush this, I'm, I'm not good with square footages, I'm not good with building. The people that are and do it every day are actually coming up here and taking what they're saying to heart, because they're doing it, they're a part of it, they're seeing it and they're building it. So I, yeah, I'd love to sit on this, get some, even though we have to pay a little bit, I know because of budget, but this is a huge thing, and everybody wants to make sure we do the right decision.
I could ask, I could ask a question first thing in the morning.
Yeah, I agree.
What, what, what some of the examples were on the, on the discussion format, that's similar to what I had done when I brought my discussion in about building on slopes and so forth. I've done lots of design myself, and lots of drawings myself, and that was why I've been very strict on the houses with slope and how with roof pitch and footage and so forth, is because I've laid that out. I know what it does on certain slopes. And I think it is right, I think there's certain areas of our town that wouldn't be rebuilt, a lot, a lot of them on slopes wouldn't. And so, but the fact that you have independent sources thinking that there's some loopholes, I think is worthy of sending it out. Just makes sense.
I agree, I mean, I still want this to move forward because just of the pressure that we're facing for development. But I think those professional opinions and sort of, and, you know, what kind of, what kind of results could we expect from these different scenarios that we might consider? And I guess, I would be careful about the word cohesive in a town where we kind of cherish the character of it. Nothing necessarily using that language anyways, but it's, it's in there now, yeah.
Well, that's about the-
Six of one, half dozen of the other.
So I'd like to leave the recommended changes that we've discussed in the past. I don't think that we've changed course in four sessions that we've looked at these.
That's right, that's right, certainly, I'd start with one if you go to thirty-two feet, I'd want to go to fourteen hundred square feet. And I'd like to hire someone as opposed to beg and borrow, because I want to take it seriously.
I have a very reputable architect that we can hire, we can hire an independent source, but I do have a very reputable architect that'd be happy to share.
And maybe we should hire that reputable architect, you know what I mean? I mean, I think you should be staying serious, you know what I mean? One of those, they're Tampa professional, blah, 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 and it, like, I think that- And by no means I want this to slow down.
No, no, no.
Move forward, because it's very important, but we need to step back from that too, and make sure we're doing it right there. The main question should be, correct me if I'm wrong, we desire to protect the historic preservation, character of our town. What are the big loopholes that are present here that endanger, that should be the main question, I think.
And I, I'm not necessarily stuck on thirty-two feet, just because I don't know if we want to make code some of the public comment reflected that would basically make our, a lot of our existing home out of compliance, I don't know if that makes sense.
I'm just pushing back on thirty feet personally.
I, no, yeah, unless there's, unless there's a less minimum roof pitch. I mean, that's-
Then I think there's, there's, that's a big strike of our character, right?
Well.
You know, and then there's obviously, obviously different-
There's give and take on every-
Yeah, you're right, it's our quirky character that we have.
Smaller, more usable space?
We've winged this, you know, just in-house before, and we're unhappy with the result we have.
Currently, yeah.
Yes, we have.
Right.
And I think that the motion is actually for discussion, so we don't actually have to table this, do we?
You postpone, you postpone.
Okay, so we'll postpone this until we've got a professional review. Can I ask one more question? How we're gonna move forward on this, I kind of want to know the parameters moving forward right now. We're gonna hire an architect to review it.
Well, are they gonna review then what, which, this, they'll review this final draft that we have?
Yep, that results in the final draft.
With the changes you guys have all done.
With our historic guideline copy also needs to be sent with at the same time, okay, into, that's what I do. Probably do a drive down, I mean, bring it around, drive it around, and let it do its research.
Okay, we'll postpone, and we'll move on then. Final reading for the franchise business ordinance.
So this one you guys have been over a hundred times, so at the last meeting, the planning commission introduced the parking facility prohibition from first to fourth, I think it is. Anne Marie thinks that's a large discussion to be had, and that can't be resolved with this adoption, so you could either, again, postpone, and not draft the franchise, or you can strike it from this, this update.
Strike that one first.
Just that part, we want to continue the franchise.
Yeah, just that, it's one line.
Yeah, and especially after last night's discussion about potential plots.
And it's not like Congress says it must be had.
I'm going to approve it and strike that line.
Second.
Thank you.
So further discussion?
I do have a couple things to discuss on this. Page one oh seven, number one A, any chain store or formula business shall not exceed three thousand square feet and shall be located in a building that is shared with at least one other business, as defined by RMC numbers, that is not a chain store or formula business. And I'm just wondering if the attorneys looked at this? And that's not like too strict?
Well, so this, this language is actually from another city. It's just copied in, she brought it from another city.
Okay.
So that, it actually read, previous, the previous proposal was for four thousand square feet. Planning commission decided to reduce that to three thousand when they proposed it. But yeah, it's-
So that's-
I think we're trying to avoid a strip mall, I think it's really-
And a large block store.
Yeah.
So there is, it would not stand alone McDonald's, for example, or stand alone Starbucks, or stand alone, it would, it would have to be incorporated into another building, so that it would be less visible.
And the attorney's okay with that?
In the designated area.
In the designated area.
I understand that, yeah. Okay.
You're not okay with it? You don't like it?
I don't know, I'm just trying to-
You think it's too restrictive?
I don't know what level of fairness we have to apply to something that we really don't want, but we're like, yeah, we, we have to make some kind of code for it. Just kind of posing the question.
It actually wouldn't be any different than what you see in like, like if you go to Leavenworth, their Starbucks is in with a bunch of other stores. They're, they've got the Safeway, and they've got Starbucks in the Safeway, so they, like, they, I mean, not only they've got two franchises, I guess.
Like the gas station with the shell type, I mean, with like a subway in it type thing?
It's not as other store, yeah. That other store wasn't a, so like, you might have Starbucks in, you wouldn't, because it's not, not an industrial, so that's a bad example. But pretend there was a building out in the industrial zone, you might have a Starbucks in something like the N W I building or something. And I'm only using Starbucks, so it's just easy.
Right, right, sure.
That can't happen.
Okay, I guess if no one else is concerned about it, then. And then, the other question is just the next page. Outdoor storage areas, mechanical equipment, utility vaults shall not be visible from abutting streets and pedestrian walkways. Is that same for all commercial businesses, or is that something where maybe it's specific?
These regulations are specific to the franchise and chain.
Okay.
Lee, you're going back to your first comment?
Yeah.
Was just three thousand square feet too much? I'm just trying, I'm, I'm, sorry.
It's just that, that the building is shared with at least one other business.
Is your, is your-
So I'm just like, you know, I guess, so if someone wants to build a building for a franchise, they have to make space for a non-franchise.
Okay, I just wanted to see where you're, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that, I'm just, I'm just worried about the legal aspect. That someone who really wanted to bring a franchise would say, that's, you know.
Pretty restrictive.
Too restrictive, yeah, but again.
And again, I just wanted to understand your concerns. Thank you for that, please.
The three versus four thousand, I don't know if I can really, I can't conceptualize the difference. I'd have to see it to really be able to say, yeah, four thousand, way too much.
Yeah, me too.
It seems like just an arbitrary reduction.
To clarify too, these restrictions are a newer thing, and there's not a whole bunch of, when she wrote this memo, you guys got a memo here.
Yeah, right.
But there's no case law at this point to support one way or the other, so it's, nothing's been challenged yet to see what, what holds up, yeah. So, that's where we're at.
And your second one, you're concerned about existing businesses?
Yeah, I mean, visible from abutting streets and pedestrian walkways. So if you're like on the corner, you can't have any outdoor storage areas visible.
There's storage and parking, like a dumpster.
Yeah, so no, then you see it like, um, Burger King, McDonald's, or whatever, they've got their trashes in an enclosure, it's not visible. So it's just a aesthetic.
In enclosure, oh, okay.
Yeah, it just has to be non-visible.
Okay, thanks. Don't have to maintain their own trash.
Another discussion on this year? Okay, then all in favor of franchise business ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Everybody opposed, aye. Franchise business ordinance passes. The last final reading is building code fifteen oh five updates.
So this one is just updating to the runner two thousand fifteen, here goes the proposal since two thousand six. With the exception of, it adds the adoption of, oh, it changes the cross at the two feet from the three feet that it is currently, like we talked about last time. And then Anne Marie had some edits that were mostly underneath that table, which were just instructions, and it all been deleted. And then the adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code and the Wildland Amendment basically. Are the two additional adoptions that were not previous.
Can we make a motion for discussion?
Second.
Building permits not required by the following, you're previous. One-story detached accessory structures, I thought that was two hundred square feet, no, a hundred and twenty square feet.
It's a hundred and twenty for residential, two hundred for residential, so it's-
Is that what it is?
It reads, it, this, well, the one I have in front of me, maybe you've got it first. One-story detached accessory structures provided that the floor area does not exceed, what page is that?
Second page.
Second, on top.
Page two.
Fifteen oh five four.
Number C, number one.
That's just from, it's stated down below. You go down to page, um, oh, this one doesn't even have page numbers, but down under fifteen oh five oh four oh.
Oh, four oh, yeah.
It has international building code adoption for the two thousand fifteen edition that exempts one-story detached structures used as tool, tool and storage sheds, playhouses, and similar uses provided the floor area does not exceed a hundred and twenty square feet. And then down below that, under number two, the International Residential Code exempts one-story detached accessory structures provided the floor area does not exceed two hundred square feet.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And this is the three, not three feet, the two feet.
Two feet, it's been changed to the two feet.
It's been changed, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
That should help building costs.
Yes.
It will help some of those costs, it'll make contractors a lot happier.
I'd like to point out that we're, the motion was for discussion, you want to vote on, make a motion for adoption? Your motion was for discussion, you want to change your motion to an adoption?
Yeah, we can make a motion to adopt this. Code fifty, one five, what?
You struck a line, amended, as amended.
As amended, adopted, amended, adopted as amended on code article on the building codes fifteen point zero five.
Second.
And what's the, what's getting-
Just that top.
On the second page, dot line, the second line on the second page that read,
The C.
Building permission not required for one-story detached accessory structures, it's stated below.
In a different part?
Yeah.
It's no longer necessary.
Oh, okay.
And it has the old square footage reference divided by twenty, it's like two hundred.
Any further discussion here, Chris? Okay, all in favor of adopting building code fifteen point oh five updates, say aye.
Aye.
Everybody opposed, aye. Building code fifteen oh five update. If you're on a mayor, council's concerns. Admin meeting that last night, we looked, we had our budget retreat, which was mainly about where we're at this year. This is the document that we looked at for that. So that, that represents, you know, an analysis of what we've accomplished and what needs to be accomplished and what won't be accomplished this year, in spite of our best efforts. And, and, and to prepare ourselves for a discussion for what is the priorities to budget for next year. We had a very good discussion, and it was, council was well represented, and so I encourage that discussion going forward. Yeah, we had a meeting two weeks at A W C, and the lawyer's gonna come, and we're gonna go over
That's the treaty.
Rules, and yeah. All commissions and committees are expected to help us.
We'll send out an email tomorrow.
Okay.
Is that the tenth, two weeks from today?
Is it, so five?
Yes.
Do we need to have an admin at four then?
Yes.
I believe we do, yes. Okay, admin at four then.
Yeah, that work for, what date is that?
The second Tuesday, or the- Second is tenth, September tenth.
First, oh, yeah.
September tenth?
Is that hour long enough?
Two.
Is it up? Five?
We burned an hour and a half yesterday.
What, with the training?
We're on fourth hour right now.
Three thirty on Tuesday?
With the city.
I should be able to, yeah.
Can you do three thirty on Tuesday?
Yeah.
Three thirty?
Yeah, can we, staff, can we do three thirty on Tuesday?
Yes.
Let's do three thirty.
Yeah, we don't take staff's time, yeah. Good idea.
So, three, three thirty, budget admin.
Budget discussion.
Five o'clock.
And we'll be looking at the documents from the different departments.
Correct.
I have one, I forgot to bring it up at the public works meeting today, but the bathrooms, we could get automated locks ordered, so we don't have to rely on our police department to go there every night and lock the bathrooms. I just figured that should be a, kind of one of those things to get done quicker than, just so we can get relief, relieve that duty and the city of Cleone's doing it right now.
Yeah.
So we can maybe copy what city of Cleone's doing.
Or see how it works for us.
Or see how it works, or do it better, yeah.
Yeah.
It's always a good way to look. Also, I'd like to thank Karen Fader for her time on the planning committee, and I really hope that we can fill that seat with somebody as dedicated as she was to the commission, so.
That reminds me, do we have any applicants for, so we have space on the planning and historic preservation committee, as well as the citizens advisory, here's the commission.
Commission.
Excuse me, and they're a committee. And there's a space on each, so I'd like those to get filled with people who are interested.
So if you're an engineer or a builder, maybe join that.
Actually, for the planning question, the code requires that we have two professionals on that.
So we definitely should aim for that.
Yeah.
At least one, I mean.
Yeah, well, that will be more diligent about reviewing, I guess. So I'll have to be more diligent on who the next one is.
Yeah, there's a requirement for two.
Two, yeah.
So make some phone calls.
Would it be maybe something to look into? To the Ronald area, to opening up the, outside of the city Roslyn?
Then the professionals aren't, also have to be residents, you mean?
Not everybody's to live here.
We'd have to change code, I'm just asking, I'm not saying, that's something I want to do, I'm just-
I don't think that's a bad idea, though.
But for, for the professional positions, still.
Well, I think that's code reads now.
But I'm saying a change in that, so that for the, if you're filling those role on the commission, maybe you don't are also a resident, because how many resident architects are there?
You're making some assumptions about the background of the commissioners. We have some law degrees, we have some interest, we have some things that you don't know about, so I really would appreciate asking questions before assuming some of us aren't professionals in our fields.
I apologize.
That would be lovely. Feels a little bit weird.
My only comment is if we're specifically hiring or appointing someone based on being that, filling that role.
There are five different professionals that could be part of it, and I'm one of them. So just-
Fair enough, I apologize.
Appreciate that.
Quite right, I took the, the term professional in, in specific relation to the task at hand, not just a general profession.
Next concern.
Now, we got the, this reminder for everybody to invite your friends and family to this Sunday. Actually, it's a Saturday for the log show, and then on Sunday for the crowning of the King Cole at ten AM at the Coleman Memorial. And then to follow that, at noon, they have, we have the parade, and if you are a nonprofit, or if you're just a positive group-